Seven one.
Yep.
We'll call meeting to order. Start your own call.
Hey, there are many.
Here.
Brennaman.
Here.
Keel.
Here.
Monahan.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Jones.
Yeah.
And Horton is absent with notice.
Alright, and we're continuing Shadow. Call from our office tonight, so. And that's what's going on up here, so. Next up, we have additions to the agenda. We'll look for a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion approved.
That is. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? You're done. Next, we'll look for a motion to approve amendments of the previous meeting. Follow nineteen, two thousand seventeen. So move.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're done. And no additional bills submitted for payment?
No.
So what we're gonna do, we're gonna go to reports. We're a chancey, we'll come back for our seven oh five here in this moment. Um, and we'll do a minute of time to show you.
Alright, uh, just in all the speeding, those school zones, um, we had a few vandalism in the city park, just the Nazi stuff. Um, just a couple, we had just lost two incidents, so we've got those getting cleared. Um, continuously a barking dog on each end, I don't really know what it is. And, uh, there's no tickets, I think, coming pretty heavy, so. And I've been getting a few emails where people aren't paying on that one. Trying to get that done, so. Other than that, that's all that's happening this month, so.
Did you say you, you took care of vandalism at home?
No, the city's still working, it's Sioux Falls has those.
Okay.
And the investigations, so. We haven't heard any, I haven't heard anything about if they caught who was doing it, but. We haven't, we just had the two incidents, so. Hopefully that's no more now that it's cold and we're still in the wild.
So there, so there hasn't been more since the last time?
Yeah, one more.
There's been one more since the last time?
Yep. So, and I, it was the same symbols.
Seconds before we went into session, my wife sent me a text saying, there's someone drifting up and down Second Street for the third time. If you wanna get him on the way out of town, uh, you go right ahead. That's why I can say I passed the word.
Oh, a guy, a walker?
That was actually a.
No, somebody that was.
Uh, that was me.
It was you?
No, I'm just kidding.
She said, send a cop.
I'll get that.
That was on.
Yep, that's on, so.
Alright, thank you. And we won't have our report from Stockwell, Mitch had some other things that. Just with holiday on Monday, he had their first house meeting he's getting to be to tonight, so couldn't be here for hours tonight, so. Anything, any pass on, do you need to relay at all, Theresa, Mitch's report?
No, basically, just, uh, wanted to let you know they're continuing the design for Mickelson Road. Um, they've got, um, some survey already being done, but this Winston Sports Complex, they're not quite finished with that, but they're working on that as well. They've had surveyors out there doing that, or, you know, creating the dirt work that we're gonna be doing, so. Basically, those two projects, they've been working on in their office the last couple of weeks.
I'll bring it up now, since I'm, I'm concerned, um, you know, we talked about the deadline. Um, with the agreement for, with Assam particularly. And my concern is, as we move the start date of that project, continue to push that back. And we have that fixed end date. I guess I was hoping Larry and Mitch would be here this evening. But I'd just like to get it out there that I feel it may cost the city more money. With that, what essentially becomes a shortened construction window. And, um, I would like to entertain, uh, at least the discussion about moving the, uh, deadline, the end date. Uh, with, with the Assam agreement particularly, back, um, to fall of twenty nineteen.
We do have twenty nineteen as an end date in the agreements. We've given us a two-year window, basically. We believe it's gonna be done at the end of next year, but the agreements have given us the.
I thought it was July, I thought it was July one, twenty nineteen.
Um, I think we did move that back. Do you remember for sure, Jeremy?
Yes, I don't remember for sure.
I have to check it, I think we do have almost a two-year window for the project. Um, like I said, Mitch still anticipates being able to bid it out this spring and getting substantial completion all done by the end of this year, twenty eighteen. But we do have in the agreements, I'll have to double check if it's July or what the exact date is, but it goes into twenty nineteen, we always have.
Yeah, I knew it did, and I'm just, I'm just thinking, um.
I can check on that though and let you know.
Did he have a late winter, what, spring?
Right, and I think there is language in the agreements that if something weather-wise affects it, we are able to push that out. It's one of those force m-.
Force majeure.
Force majeure things that we can, you know, extend the deadline if we want to, but I'll, I'll double check what that date is, and, yeah, we've talked about issues that might come up. Like I said, whether or whatnot, and it would fall under that paragraph in our agreements.
Sam that night, and he said that's what that clause is in there for, was do whatever.
True, we talked about that night.
He's, he's on video saying that, so.
Yeah, I understand where you're coming from, Travis, too, on that, because it's, if it's not pushed out, if it's not in twenty nineteen. It, uh, it's just gonna make those bids that much higher, so what you're getting at is those bids that are gonna come in.
I, I believe ultimately it will affect the taxpayers, it'll affect the, the cost of the project, um, so that's my concern.
I'll double check that date for you and have some more information, I'll send out an email to all you guys, so you get that information.
When was Sam, when, what night was Sam here?
I was trying to find that one.
I was too.
Here's our last meeting, it's the nineteenth.
The nineteenth?
No, 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 no. Oh, no, the meeting before, you're right, you came to the first one, the first meeting, so it's been the fifth. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you're right.
Were you here for that one, Jones?
I was.
Yep, I wasn't, so.
I was trying to find it in the minutes if we referenced that. I know, I know we had quite the discussion.
It'd be in the counter.
Yeah, it's in the agreements all along.
I don't think that agreement's online, because it's not in there, is it?
No, no, it's not, later.
I can't remember what it was, the completion.
I have to, yeah, go back now to grab one, sure.
Yeah, just.
I know we've been into twenty nineteen, though, we, I mean, it's not the end of this year, we made sure we got another construction season with it, just for those issues. I'll double check that date and send an email to all you guys tomorrow, so you have all that for sure.
Yeah, it says that we, uh, Sam Assam approached, motion made way. Authorized the mayor to sign five separate agreements, so you signed them based on that night, but it doesn't say, it doesn't talk about the discussion we had with the date.
We just authorized the signature, they haven't. Yeah, he hasn't signed, yeah, he hasn't signed any agreements, we have all the agreements back and signed them, Jeremy has it. Larry wants to go through each one of them, make sure they got all the correct content in them, and then bring them all to Jeremy at one time, all the easements and land transfers and that stuff.
So this really, then drives along my point, we continued to push the start date back and back and back.
Well, during this time, they're, they're still working on construction documents now, which.
And again, those are behind schedule, in my opinion.
And those were behind, because you just gave authorization beginning of December to let them continue with those, so that, they did stop work on those for a while, and that pushed it back, yeah, so.
We had, we had a deadline day, which is coming on. So why should the city put ourselves at risk, or not even, we're not gonna put ourselves at risk. We, I fully believe we've just incurred more debt, it's gonna cost us more money to, because I feel that that's construction window shortened, our, we're getting later in the season for bidding. So those bid prices, in my opinion, are gonna go up, that's my point. That's, that's it, I mean, that's.
I'd kinda watch what happens in the next couple of months as far as major projects out there, that'll help us know what. If there's contractors out there looking for it yet, or if they're getting filled up, I mean, that's gonna make a big difference on it.
Um, I have her here, she's Turtle Creek, right? And then Turtle Creek contract within thirty days of the substantial completion of the construction of Mickelson Project, which shall the date be, on or before July first, two thousand nineteen?
Yeah.
What meeting was that?
That was the seventh of December.
That's when, that's when Larry presented that, Sam was here, we talked about the contracts, and that's when we had all the discussion over the date. Over that nineteenth.
I'm sorry, fifth.
I was about to say, okay, so it was the fifth.
I mean, I know this is a big project, but is this normal for it to take this long to get the agreement signed? I mean, I'm pretty new here, is this normal?
No.
It, this is the longest it's ever taken on a project I've been involved in, but this has been the biggest project we've had, too, so there's a lot of.
Well, but I, I think what, I think what's going on is there's, there's three attorneys involved. There's Rosa's attorneys, there's Sam's attorneys, and there are our attorneys. And, you know, every one of them is too busy to, you know, it's all, I'll email you in a week, you know, or two. I'll make my changes and email them back to you.
Right.
You know, all, this, nobody, nobody gets together and hammers this stuff out in a day, like they used to. How long ago, it's, you know, I'll have my whoever drafted, and then I'll review it, and then we'll send it to you, and you have somebody receive it and look at it, and then make, it's, it's just a bunch of email gabby groups, so.
Sam's pretty slow, too, we've been talking to Sam for over six years on this project. Every spring and every fall, we've been meeting with him on this project, and. And he's one that's requested the meetings, too, because he wants to get going the next spring on it, and this way it's been for six years.
Well, if, if you guys wanna pull the plug or change the scope of the project, I'm all on board, but, I mean, you know, if, if you wanna get the whole project done, I mean, we gotta go, we gotta go down the rabbit hole, however far it goes, we gotta go down the rabbit hole. Because if, if you change the scope of the project, I mean, you're gonna stick a knife in it and you're gonna kill it. And then it's really gonna get expensive if you do that, if you come back and do it later. Two separate deals.
There's nothing we can change tonight, right now, and we don't have any of that on, but I think it's a good discussion to see what happens between, you know, well, you just reviewed it, Nelson, so can we kinda have that date there? We know it's at July twenty nineteen, but if council feels like it's something they wanna have on the next agenda, and there's something that wants to be, you know, changed between now and then, like Monahan's getting to.
I think, I think there's more information to come out later on tonight, but.
Well, um, I can just tell you where we're sitting, everything's kinda.
Well, we got a seven oh five, we should probably.
Yeah, we should do that.
Yeah.
Alright, any other questions on the rest of Mitch's report right now? Let's jump back up. Alright, we have seven. Seven oh five here, for renewal of city garage licenses, Novak Sanitary Service, Cressman Sanitation, and RBS Sanitation, so. Theresa's got that kinda laid out in there. Nothing necessarily different, Novak and Cressman have the house to house picked up, and RBS for little offs, alright?
And these are the same, go ahead.
Make motion to approve their renewal of city garage licenses.
Second. Discussion? Nelson?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yes.
Yeah.
Then, while we're in there, let's quick jump, our next hearing is actually at eight o'clock, because, uh, we need to wait to make sure we can be here for that one. So, but we'll move to resolution two thousand eighteen dash one, resolution to establish a zoning administrator. Some trees that brought up that comes up in a lot of the verbiage that she's going through, and we don't have anything that shows that we've established a zoning administrator.
So, yeah, so, as you know, we are going through our subdivision regulations, and the new format that we're using references, um, how the zoning administrator is set. And the zoning administrator, basically, I've been doing those duties, you know, um, if there's any zoning questions, or, you know, how we interpret the zoning rules, you know, that's what the zoning administrator does, you know, as far as issuing billing permits and kinda that stuff. So, like I said, um, you know, our new subdivision regulation, there's a spot in there to say zoning administrator is established by resolution XXX or ordinance, whatever. I've looked through our resolutions and ordinances, and I can't find where we have one that states that, you know. I'm sure, you know, like I said, it's been part of my duty since I have been the city administrator, Roland did it before me, I'm sure maybe probably at some time, a motion was made to set the city administrator as a zoning administrator, but. I have to go back through a lot of minutes to figure, because I have no idea when and where, you know, that was set. So I think the easiest thing to do, and that's why I'm introducing this resolution, is basically it's a resolution in your packet, and it states that the city administrator, whoever that may be, will do the zoning administrator duties, which, which is what we've been doing, but. This, you know, tied it to a resolution, it'll be easy to find in the future, it designates it, it sets it, and, you know, we can file it with our resolution, so that's what this, you know, resolution two thousand eighteen one would do, was establish the city administrator to be the zoning administrator as well.
Make motion to approve our resolution two thousand eighteen dash one.
Second. Question?
Well, I did ask one discussion, I get pretty clear, the only, the only question I had, Theresa, is as far as it comes to an appointment? Because it doesn't speak about, doesn't speak about eternity appointment? Or, or, I wanna get that is, is can this mayor appoint you, and then you remain appointed until somebody else?
Somebody changes it.
Until somebody else unappoints you and appoints somebody else?
Right.
Okay.
Another mayor coming in and wanting to change that appointment.
Okay. So that's the only question I have.
Any other questions?
So this just steps the resolution in, and then you can do whatever you want, right, then you can appoint her?
This is, so this is a resolution establishing our city administrator, whoever that may be.
Oh, okay.
As the zoning administrator, unless we change it.
So we don't have to make a second step, and you appoint her?
No, this states that it is appointed by the mayor to set.
Okay.
Basically, need a vote on the council to approve.
Alright.
One more question, questions? Ben, I'm in.
Yeah.
Brennaman?
Yeah.
Keel?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Nelson?
Yes.
You still have to appoint whoever approved.
That's what I was trying to ask, did I ask it wrong?
Well, the last sentence says, says that the mayor of Hartford shall appoint the city administrator with approval of the council, so voting for this resolution as a zoning administrator for, so. By passing this resolution, this resolution says he's appointing the city administrator as a zoning administrator. You voted to pass this resolution, so you have voted on that appointment, so. So I think that's all.
Hey, that's the question I was trying to ask.
Yeah, I think that's safe enough.
So the next step would be, you know, like, we have been asking, we vote on that one.
No, no, it's already voted on, this is done, because.
It's worded weird, but that's, that's what it says.
The, the last paragraph is, yeah, worded.
Well, see, I jumped, I jumped on the next thing, because I thought this was a slam dunk.
Yeah.
Don't do that, I won't do that again.
It's good, alright, we will move down, back to reports, just wanna look at a couple things over here in a minute. While we were on reports, anything else on the Stockwell engineer report? Any, any other questions on that, or do you wanna jump back into that in another time?
I'll just say, I'm not saying we need to throw the baby out with bathwater, I'm just saying if you continually move the start date of any project back without changing the end date. The costs go up, in my opinion.
Yeah, and originally, we did have a two thousand eighteen end date, and so that's why we moved it into nineteen, so. Um, just to let you know, and I was gonna say this during my report, but since we're talking about Mickelson Road, so. All the agreements are in and signed, we've got the H plats and the listation plat filed on Friday, on Sam Assam's plan. Um, Jeremy will still need to come though and sign all the agreements, sit down with Larry and sign all his agreements, but right now Larry's going through each one to make sure, you know, they're in the right form and manner before we have the mayor sign. We, as he's doing that, and I just wanna bring you up to date on this, we got Rosa's agreements back, they are signed. As Larry was going through reading the agreements, some of the verbiage has been changed on Rosa's agreement by her attorney without our knowledge, so. Um, we are trying to get ahold of Robin Ick regarding that, as you can imagine, Larry's not too happy, because it's his document, and anytime you take one attorney's document, and if you change it, usually, you know, let him know. Professional courtesy that this has been altered or changed, and let us know.
Is that someone stay bars, you know, though?
Doesn't seem real ethical to me, but, um, we sent her, he tried calling her, I'm trying to think what day it was, if it was Friday or Wednesday, I think this happened all on Wednesday, he tried calling her. Maybe it was Monday, or two. I know, when we found out, he contacted me, yeah, it's been a missed week with all the holidays, but when he contacted me, he, and he tried to get ahold of her, she didn't take his phone call, so he sent her an email and said, hey, these are the documents I sent to you. They've been changed, nobody has notified us of the change, we did get an email back from her that week stating, well, the changes are pretty minor, I didn't think they'd be significant. Well, regardless of what they are, they, we should have been notified, and a lot of them are, you know, just a few little language probably aren't significant, probably did not change the meaning of the agreement, but, once again, like I said, they're, they're altered. Um, so, he sent her an email back saying, you know, he should have notified us, you know, here are the things, you know, that we're okay with, here are the things we would rather keep into it, you know, call me and discuss it, and she has not contacted back. He tried her again today, not contacted back again, at the five o'clock, so. Like I said, we have signed agreements from her, they probably don't significantly alter the meaning of it, but we're gonna work with Robin and see why they got changed, and for what reason, so. Just wanna let you guys know of the situation.
I'd be curious to find out why that reason is.
Yes, we, we all will be happy and, and, so. Um, I say, not until we do have all the signed agreements here, the mayor has not signed any of them yet, just, because like I said, we wanna go through them.
I ain't signing them until the attorney goes.
You're saying you may never go, you may never get these things signed?
Yeah, so, had a head shaker, but we'll keep you updated on that. Wire for what reason, I, I don't know, but.
And I think that speaks a lot to Mark's point earlier, is it's back and forth between attorney, and attorney, and attorney, and it's just, I would nail it. In some of these cases, although Sam's better, developer that's a, used to a Sioux Falls type process, and wants it, wants things a different way, and it's.
I'm guessing if you change some words and sign them, and email them back, and they don't like it, and change it back, and email it back, I mean, you're, you're ringing the bell on both sides. Hundred fifty, hundred seventy five. Plus email, paper, and ink. It's a good gig if you can get it.
I like selling plastic.
But during all this, Stockwells are continuing with their design work, expect that to still be done here in March, so we can get out.
Thank you. I guarantee you, Mark, you, you alluded to it, but, um, a lot of time and money would be saved if the mayor, the city administrator, and the, uh, property owners and their attorneys could sit down. And do it in a day, and do it in a day, I don't have any comp, I was like, you can do it in a day. When you get to, this, when you're this close to the finish line, boy, you think that, that'd be quick this way, and just hurt a lot.
I thought, I thought more was.
Maybe my horse quit coming, huh? I haven't shored anyone.
The cable was rolling, but yes, I switched into Iowa, we'll keep moving on. Look for, uh, public works superintendent report?
Um, streets, the slurry seal, we've got all the information in the Stockwell, Stockwell's actually sent it back, and looked it over, it's been forwarded to the city of Sioux Falls, going out for getting, out for bids with them. Um, haven't heard of a date yet to wonder actually gonna go out and have a bid, bid opening on that. Hopefully they'll know some here next couple of weeks, when it's gonna be. Slow removal, um, spending, okay, we've had those light dustings and a little bit of wind here, there, just nothing but nuisance, um, trying to keep up with that, we'll be doing some work on here this week, trying to scrape them out, so it's all filling dry, we'll see if we can possibly do it. Um, equipment, I put in there that all equipment was in good shape and running good, um, I did this thing Friday morning, and Friday afternoon, I hit a valve box with a maintainer, and did some damage to it, um, probably a couple thousand dollars, damaged the wing, so. We've got a tore part, um, a couple shafts, and some pins and that stuff, and one hydraulic cylinder, so. Why the valve didn't break, because ninety percent of the time, they'll bust right off, and you'll hop over them, I plowed this street three times prior, or two times prior, run the curb the same way, and this time the valve decided to have the frost push it up a little bit, and caught it just at the wrong spot, so. Took us about forty-five minutes to get the blade out from underneath the maintainer, it was, but it's, that was the only damage to it, nothing happened to the blade itself, so we should be in a couple of weeks, probably a week, um, to get the parts back in, for especially the cylinder, it'll take, the shaft got bent on the cylinder, so. So the lowest that's, the wing that broke so far this year for equipment, so, and I was wondering, I don't know when it happened, so. Christmas lights, kind of waiting to see what the weather's like tomorrow, we'll probably get started on them. Shift guys back and forth, so everybody's getting frostbite out to try to take them down, so we'll kind of work with the weather on that. Uh, water reports, um, all the water reports for the quarter have been sent, or for the year, actually been sent in, if they went well with them, uh, just for, if anybody's had to look back at some reports and see how many meters got put in this year, we had fifty-three meters get put in this last year, which is a record for, we usually run about that thirty, right in there, thirty, thirty-five, so we did real well this year. A lot of that's with those multi-units, everyone's putting a separate meter in, which is good for the city, because it's that much more revenue, so. Uh, sewer, um, right now, we're just, uh, I've got the rest of the reports in for, did fill out the DMRs, I'll be filling those out this week, getting them sent in, they're not due until the twenty-eighth of January, but I'll get them sent in this week, if possible, have them out of the way, so, and we'll have to take care of the quarter, or all the reports for the last year, so, that'll be taken care of. Ice skating rink, we thought we were gonna get a start on it, Terry actually went down and cleaned the snow off one day, um, he looked it over, and we figured that maybe just if we shoot some spacious colds, it was gonna be, we thought we'd just shoot some layers on it, it would be okay. It's been okay, but we've been doing, but moving snow and cleaning sidewalks, anything like that, sounds, so we haven't had a chance to get back on it. Cool, nothing there, public billing, basic thing is, uh, we'll be working on inventory here this next few weeks, getting that ready for the waterers, so, that's all I got.
I like the layout.
Yeah, I like this, too.
Yeah, I like this too.
It, uh, though that I gotta lay it out a little better. Took a little bit to kind of get the, figure out how to do it, Patrice kind of told me what she thought might work out well and we got going, so. So hopefully it'll definitely kind of fall into place with that, so.
What is our rule, Craig? I should know this, two inches when we go claw?
Um, a lot of it depends on the weather, I mean, two inches typically, but you know, if it's gonna snow four inches.
Yeah.
And not traffic time, whatever, we'll just wait until it's done snowing.
Alright.
Um, two inches where we can start ticketing. If we, if we got some dustings that are like, if you look at the forecast, we're gonna get inch today, inch tomorrow, and you know, so you get that accumulation. Then we'll go out, we might do shoulders, just kind of depends on what the snow condition might be. And sometimes it might just be the outskirts of town, the inside town might not even have anything that came in, so. It's all kind of a judgment more than anything else. I, last week I drove, came into town a couple of nights, a couple different times throughout the nights, and just drove the roads, just see what they look like, make a decision when it falls, so.
Seen the up and down part to you a couple times.
So, thank you. Yeah, that's about the only way you could, you could sit in your window and look outside and go, okay, yep, and tell you actually go on driving, you don't really know where to, what to do with them, so.
I'm a veteran now, Mickelson, did you get that knocked down a little bit before we got the snow, is it still really ready?
Yeah, we bladed up until I think the day before it's snowing, so.
Okay.
And now that with snow on it, even going down and you're still knocking it flat, or so, I mean, it's, it's getting better, but. But you got any else?
Questions? Thanks, Greg. Alright. And we've got tenants officer report, Tandra?
Alright, so at the top, I just kind of put a highlight of some of the revenue that we got in December, so that you have an idea of where we're sitting on a few things. Um, in the box, I also have an update on the totals through November, um, of two thousand and seventeen. Um, both in revenue and expenses. Um, I've included in my report, um, the meeting schedules for you guys as well as the planning and zoning, obviously those are now subject to change, but those are the, the tentative dates for this year on those as well, and then I know that Teresa has emailed you about this, but we do need to know about the rib dinner with the municipal government day at legislation. The deadline is coming up, so the sooner I know, the better, so we can get a check in to them, because they want the money by the twenty-third, so that I need some mailing time as well on that, so. Um, I've also included, um, some calendar of events that are coming up as well, so, any questions?
I see it one date wrong on your listing of meeting dates.
Oh, yeah.
March sixth and then March two, it should be twenty, I'm assuming.
Hmm, um. Say that again?
March sixth and then it says March two, it should be twenty.
Then we need a listing. Oh, he is, oh, I see. Probably. Yeah, I probably, yeah, there you go. I see what you're saying. Um, yeah, it's a typo. So it's actually the second meeting for the council in March is.
The twentieth.
The twentieth, so, yep, I didn't hit the zero. I have issues with my zero on this thing, so. But that's correct.
I read it that class.
That's good, it's impressive.
I appreciate that.
I just, I just wanted that, that I read.
That you read it, thank you, I appreciate that. And I also made sure on the planning and zoning to put, to be determined on the April tenth, and then the, just obviously December twenty-fifth. It wouldn't happen on Christmas, so that would definitely be, uh, to be determined, but the April tenth one is because we usually have a usually we'll have an election that day, so we may have to move it. Yeah, so, and we have that on the agenda tonight as well, so under my section here, that we need to set the two thousand and eighteen election date, and that's April tenth of two thousand and eighteen. So I do need a motion for that as well.
I'll make a motion to set the election date for April tenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Greg.
Discussion? Nelson?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes.
Uh, real quickly, uh. Has anybody else done this, signed for this rib dinner thing?
I'm considering it, but I haven't decided yet either.
Because obviously that's a city council date, right?
It is a city council date. That's why we need to know, so if there's a few that wanna go, we'd have to move the city council date.
Right.
That would be the reason, so I, I'm not aware of any.
It really means you need to know for sure by next meeting.
Yep.
And before that, of the next meeting, and know for sure.
Yep.
Is that a period?
Huh? Yeah.
You guys are all way up here for a free dinner?
No, I'm not going there for the free dinner, I'm going for the legislative session, namely on Wednesday the seventh.
And we have a car, we can carpool.
Ooh, is it Scott's car?
No, it's not. See, that's, that's what I'm trying to get at here, it's not Scott's car.
You wouldn't have to worry about the air conditioning. We're taking the liquors.
Now, how's your key?
Any other questions?
Thanks, Tandra. Alright, then we'll move to the rest of Teresa's report.
Um, just what I had in the packet. Security cameras, I'm meeting with a third company tomorrow to discuss placement of security cameras and what the cost would be here at City Hall, so I should have something for the next agenda to present to you and go over those figures and proposals. Um, I put in my report, um, I wanted you guys to think about, do we want to start discussing possibility of enacting a maintenance fee? We talked a little bit about it last year. Um, maintenance fee is basically a, a fee that a city can enact on its tax. To, um, you know, it'd be collected basically at tax time through the county. Um, whatever we would set, it would be an extra revenue source and fee that we could use for road maintenance, you know, gravel, slurry seal, crack seal, and you know, it's another revenue source. Um, maintenance fee, you know, we could really set it whatever we want, you know, usually most of towns set, you know, it's, they go by, you know, how much front footage do you have, it's, you know, a dollar a foot, footage is what it would cost you, or two dollars, or you, whatever we'd wanna set it with, you know. Um, but, like I said, you know, our expenses keep on rising and we are limited of what revenue sources we get in, so. Um, just wanted to get your input, are you up for, you know, talking about, I'll gather some more information as far as what other cities do, you know, as far as, you know, um, do they have a maintenance fee, do they not, you know, how much is it, how do they enact it, you know, as far as it, you know, perling your foot or some other way?
How would it be collected? Taxes?
Through the taxes, yeah. We, we would pass the resolution and it would get sent to the county and they would collect it basic. Basically, you get your tax statement and on it would be another line item saying, you know, Hartford maintenance fee, X amount of dollars is on yours, so.
It's on your property taxes.
Basically another tax.
I'd, I'd.
You know, they're not.
At the very least, I'd be curious at how much footage we have citywide.
Yeah.
Cause I, I hate to throw out a number without knowing what the footage is.
Yeah. I, I had that sent to me at one time, I can't remember what is offhand, but.
Sixty-four thousand feet?
I think it's lane miles, I think we're about sixteen, probably thirty-two lane miles or something like that.
We have both.
I know it's getting more and more common. I mean, you're seeing more and more cities do it, and I, I'd be interested to know, I know we looked at it last year, I'd be interested to see which cities have put more on.
How much?
Cause it, it seems to, I mean, it's just an inevitable thing, you spend the money to put the street in. But then we're on the hook for it forever. And as we put more and more and more and more streets in, it's a small way to recoup some of those costs, but.
You start at twenty-five, son. You said thirty-one lane mile.
And we tried to do all the streets.
That's right, but let's go back.
That's a hundred and sixty-eight thousand running feet.
So like I said, I'm enacting to gather more information, we can have more discussion, nothing has to be.
I know it's not gonna be popular, but, you know, the, the water rates increase and the sewer rate increases were incredibly unpopular as well. But if we wouldn't have enacted those, if, if somebody wouldn't have ripped that band-aid off, you, you, we wouldn't be sitting here where we're sitting right now.
Like I said, the more and more roads we incur and take over, it's just more extra maintenance expense, you know, floor seal and then crack seal and then it's just added cost that keeps rising.
I'm, I'd entertain how much footage we have and, uh, some other municipalities, uh, rates.
Yep, I, I gathered that information.
Even if we start, even if you started the program at a
Small amount.
You know, a quarter foot or ten cents a foot, at least you get it started. So then, you know, in the future, if you need, you know, somebody besides me sitting here, you know, that decides they need to raise that because of X, Y, or Z, at least the ball's already rolling. And then you're not going from nothing to a buck a foot, you're going from twenty-five cents to fifty cents, so.
I realize also lots of whole part of town are sixty-six feet, and they went to seventy-two feet, and then like Parte and stuff like that, they're maybe eighty, eighty-five, I mean, yours is probably more than that.
Hundred and eighty.
Like my new development are seventy-two. So very cold ones are probably seventy-five, seventy-eight, so even a dollar isn't enough.
Yeah. Well, I was looking at a lot, and I got, I think I got ninety on one side and a hundred and ten or a hundred and twenty on the other, and I mean, I wouldn't be real happy about giving this town about two hundred dollars, but.
You could just do a front footage though and then we eliminate the side lot, you know.
The problem that's gonna create is somebody's gonna come down here and say Craig's doing an awful job, and I'm paying X amount per foot and he's doing an awful job. That's gonna, it's gonna open up the door for everybody to complain who's getting charged and not getting what they think they should be getting for their job.
That should only bring about two more people in.
Just two more people. Well, it's gonna bring me, it's gonna bring me in, I haven't been in yet. So, Martin's already in, he's been in from the get-go. An actual deal, did it in Worthington, filed in Worthington. City of Worthington had their own street poles and bases. The one out in front of his house was ready to dip over, thrust off. I mean, it was in terrible shape. So my first complaint, of course, I heard, I gotta pay this fee, I'm gonna pay this play toll, you know, so we don't have that, you know, those are Sioux Valley. Um, when, when you step outside in front of your house and you look at what the city of Hartford is responsible for, it's not much. I mean, that you can physically see. Your street, your curb. So. I, I think, I think it's probably a good time to move that one.
It's good.
It's something to look at, and so, you know, I can get.
Let's, let's start with the footage, I'd be real curious how.
And what is affect, does this affect the mill maybe in any way, shape, or form?
It's separate from the mill.
Well, actually, future will help keep it down because we won't have to raise it to start recouping some of this money for street improvements, stuff like that.
Interesting point.
You guys got Mickelson then first. People would rather pay, people would rather pay that than have you come back and say, oh, our street's twenty-five, thirty years old, now we're gonna assess you again. Which again, tear up the street, assess the property owner again.
Well, that's, that's gonna happen anyway, though. The maintenance fee's not gonna be, the maintenance fee will cover some of the maintenance costs.
Yeah, that's some of the maintenance costs.
Alright, do you live on Mickelson Avenue?
No, Patrick.
Oh, I was gonna say. You sure seem to know what's going on down there.
Well, I, Mickelson's on the side of my house, Mark.
Are we gonna charge, are we gonna charge him payment?
Oh, I'm sure I'm getting charged triple.
I hope so. We need to temporarily revoke that.
Just the, just the cost of paying this contempt.
Alright, go ahead.
And now I get the short chair. I agree with more on that.
Um, next thing, I, I just let you know, you know, we had our meeting about budget items and as far as, you know, our strategic planning and whatnot. We've already ordered the blade for the Skidster, you know, we've got that taken care of. Um, I'm working with RIT to see if we can go to cloud program versus a server, so, you know, we're working on that. Um, I will have Craig gather some prices on the push claw for the backhoe and then also for the new payloader. Um, I had put in here that we will look in, um, as far as the whiteboard projector in February, um, actually, it's gonna be on the next council meeting, Scott asked me to put it on, so. We'll have it coming up at our second meeting here, we'll look at that, and then in March, we will check into the playground equipment and more, that kind of goes off the timeline I had written down for the, in our meeting, so we're working on all stuff. Um, bringing an update, I guess, should talk about this with Mickelson Road, but, um, just wanted to give you an update on the funding, our bond from, um, the state D N R, the one point four, it is already done, it's completed. Excuse me. So we can be, start to withdraw from that, we can withdraw some of our engineering expense and our upfront costs out of that. Um, the bond, it's not like a regular loan where, uh, we get one point four million sitting in our bank account, we can just spend it. We do draws off it, so we'll have to submit our expenses and draw, so I'll be working with CCOG and we'll start submitting some of those that we've already incurred, like I said, as far as engineering and attorney fees, because that can go against it. And then we are still, um, still in the process with road development as far as our second lot, our second loan for the street surfacing, so we're gathering that information as well, submitting that application. Um, like I said, planning and zoning, we're working on our subdivision regulations, as you know. And as part of that, we, um, are also updating our design standards, they're basically two separate documents. We have the subdivision regulations, which basically state, if you're a developer, here's a process that you need to go through, you know, here's the first step, second step, there's, this is what you need to do. The design standards are more kind of the technical, um, aspects, saying that you're gonna put in a street, it needs to be this wide and, um, you know, it has to have this many lanes, need to be this wide, or um, if you're gonna put in a water main, it's gotta be this size versus a service line, can be, it's more the technical aspects, so. Um, we've done a couple reviews of the subdivision regulations. At our next meeting here next week, we're gonna start looking at the design standards. They work hand in hand because of subdivision regulations reference the design standards, so we wanna go through both those documents and then present to the council, so. Probably within the next month or so, we should have both those completed and come to you guys this spring yet.
When, oh, sorry, no. When completed, okay? Um, and we've experienced this, this year, last year, excuse me, it's two thousand and eighteen now. Um, will, it be pertinent to, to, uh, relay the changes or this, this kind of information to the developers?
Yeah.
And what, and how, what means can we plan on doing that?
I think we'll send them a copy of our new regulations would be the best way to do that. Of course, we always have them posted online, um, the current ones on there now, we'll have the new ones on there, but, um, any developments that are going, we will give them a new copy of it.
Could you maybe get that in, registered, registered mail?
Yeah, I think I signed for it, yeah, so we know, yeah, exactly, so, no, we'll, we'll have to let know our date. Um, the last thing I have on there, um, just let you know, the, the waste stations, um, the Girl Scout troops have already raised the money to fund all. We've got those ordered, they got them, plus a whole bunch of bags coming our way, so this spring, we should be able to get them out and get them going. Well, I do have one other thing I wanted to bring up, um, Jesse had brought up at the meeting, um, Project Artemis, you know, we had submitted the, our file for that. Um, request of, north of the sport complex there. Um, over the holiday break, I guess the company that is proposing to, you know, looking for the new facility, um, was approached about, um, selling their company to, approached from a buyer to sell to them, so they're contemplating they may be selling their facility, so, um, they're just in talks now, it'll probably be February, but before we hear, are they gonna sell or are they not, so. We're not having, we're supposed to mount them this Friday, they won't have any meetings, so we'll have to see how that goes, if they decide to sell or not. If they're in track, so just wanted to give you that update. And that's all I got, unless you have questions.
Thanks, Teresa, any other questions? Alright, we'll move on to new business. First item on new business is the appointment of planning and zoning board for two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and twenty term. And, uh, there are three spots that, that were opened on this, it's, uh, three spots are currently being held by Matt Kane, Bob Bender, and Free Mark. Couple months ago, I reached out to all three of them, talked with them about a few different things, kind of went over all of that. And actually, Bob and I's probably been the one that haven't been able to get in contact very often, but for Matt and Rick and I have, and for appointments for the upcoming term, what I would like to do is, is reappoint two of the three positions and leave one of them open until, I've had some discussions, a small handful of discussions with some, some other folks about, um, coming on planning and zoning, but nothing that's necessarily done yet, and I would like to continue to have those discussions and, and take any anything, any suggestions from any of you too for that, so. So, so, so I'm keeping one of those three open, can we appoint that when the fact comes? My appointments right now for the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and twenty term are Matt Kane and Bob Bender. We have the third one open at the.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mark, are you here because you're interested in being on the planning and zoning?
That's something we can discuss.
Um, turning a motion second, other discussion?
Okay.
Come through.
Nelson?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Vernon?
Yep.
And Mark?
Yeah.
All right, next up, especially billboards. This one, I believe. Tell someone that has this one on there, is that right?
Yeah. Yeah, that did, that did, and, uh, I, kinda sort of back work my way. Obviously, the, the one thing scenario here is that it's kinda become a use it or lose it situation. You can see the report, um, billboard information here that Teresa has in her packet. Um, you know, uh, first off, let's take it from top to bottom. Billboard number one expires. The billboard, the vinyl itself is expired, um, but, uh, that's gonna be open come September. Billboard number two has never been rented. I didn't know that. I thought at least we had something on there. Chamber is used as number three at one point. Bottom line is, uh, that the DOT will make us, uh, take this down, uh, take the plywood down if, uh, they're not running by next June. Um, and so, um, you know, while it's a labor intensive and, and, and somewhat expensive, uh, venture, um, Travis, you mentioned Worthington. I, I, you know, Worthington inspired me to, to do this because they had some, um, signs out on their interstate, uh, that said, uh, we have commercial and residential land available called blah, 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 you know. Now, obviously, the, the resident or the commercial side of things, we're a little more touch and go. Um, but, uh, you know, we don't have to have a twenty-eighth plot to, to promote, you know, you know, commercial land. For example, when Jesse and I met with, um, Taco John's, uh, with the, uh, the properties off, outside of eight, two, three, and seven, there were seven of them there, you know. Anywhere in the range of from an acre to darn near probably five. Um, and so, I mean, even the, the longevity of this is the biggest thing I have on the commercial side. Um, and then the residential side, I take a pretty darn sick, you know, as far as, uh, you know, having residential land available, at least for the next five years. I mean, with the development that's coming down the pipe, uh, you know, we can simply, you know, have Jesse being the go-to guy, steering them that direction. I think that creates a lot of attention, a positive attitude, and I also think it's a form of branding for our community. Uh, so, uh, the, the question really is, okay, how are we gonna utilize them and where? Um, you know, Teresa, I remember, you know, you sending those letters out, it's referenced in here, uh, with, uh, little or no response. Um, and I know that Ryan Horn had kinda, you know, wanted to take charge of a little bit and see if there was something out there that he could stir up. I didn't have a chance to talk to Ryan and see what kind of response he got. So, um, I called Crystal Walder before, um, I get to the meeting, uh, cause the marketing committee had purchased, um, a vinyl sign forty-eight feet wide by twelve feet high. Um, this was probably about, should, 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 I'm gonna say five to seven years ago, and it was right at a thousand dollars. Going right now is about fifteen hundred dollars. Now, um, you know, what that message could be, I know I'm, you guys haven't met, H A D C has not met since, since, um, the, the last meeting, is that correct? Since the nineteenth of December?
Been there last Friday.
Been there last Friday. Was this drawn up in any way, shape, or form? Okay. Um, so I, I just, I'd hate to see that, you know, those be taken down, you know. I'd like to see it use it to market our community just a little bit. Is it gonna be free? No, it's not. Um, and, uh, but we're not talking about a huge chunk of money here. I also asked Crystal, the average install, uh, if we can't talk Craig into doing it. We'll skip number six, we don't worry about that one, that one's dangerous, we all know about that. How about two and three? Are two and three hard to get at straight up? If you tell me yes, I understand.
I don't think they're too bad.
Okay.
I mean, they're hard for to get taller, wider.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Yeah, you even gotta have the right conditions. Um, so really, I, I want to open it up to you guys for your opinion. Number one, you think it's worth it? Number two, do you think the message can be evergreen enough that we don't, you know, have to, uh, you know, pull it down two years from now? And then three, are we, are we getting the cart ahead of the horse to the point where we're helping other entities, i.e. residential slash developers, commercial, you know, I mean, I think that's, that goes, we're, we're fine there as far as that part of it goes. Um, even though we only have.
I'm gonna jump on your enthusiasm.
Go ahead.
Uh, because I just coincidentally got a call from a developer this morning. Who was looking at developing Hartford, couldn't get the numbers to work, wanted to move that development into Sioux Falls, and then I asked him, what could Hartford do to help you? He said, you, you can market yourself better, and so I wish Jesse was here, and I asked him, what, what do you mean by that? He said, you know, people drive by Hartford don't even realize you have a golf course. They don't realize what a great school system you have. You know, they don't really understand what the amenities are in town. And, uh, you had mentioned Worthington's billboards. I came through Pipestone and they had billboards, uh, promoting their school. Um, and I thought, jeez, you know, why couldn't Hartford do that? Why couldn't we do, why couldn't we utilize those dead boards? And to promote our, our golf course, promote our parks, promote our school, uh, and what other, whatever else might come about. That'd be money, I think, well spent, and I think our return on that would be fairly high over, uh, five, six year window. Whatever the, what'd you say the life of those billboards are?
Life of billboard can go somewhere from five to ten. I mean, uh, the J M Re one is at the end of its life and that's been there for ten-ish years. Uh, but tend to stretch in it big time, uh, you know, quality of it and all that kinda stuff, um.
If you just look at it for a five-year lifespan, return on that, most of them, I think, could be pretty high, and you wouldn't have to directly support, let's say, Great Life, but you could promote the golf course.
Right.
Those kinds of sorts of things. So this, this contractor, um, has developed in, uh, all over the area, and actually, you mentioned Beersford. Beersford's a town of twenty-one hundred people. Uh, they got Burger King, uh, they got Casey's, they got, they got lots of, I mean, they're, they're far enough away from Sioux Falls that they can kinda stand alone. But he said, uh, one thing that they're doing is, if you're gonna come develop in Beersford, we're gonna, we're gonna bring you the sewer water. They have their own municipality there too, so it's a little different animal as well. But what, he segued off of that and said, I didn't realize Beersford had a golf course. I didn't realize Beersford had million dollar homes. So, again, it's, we, we're here, we know we have it, we drive by it every single day, and uh, we forget, uh, to promote it if, if we really wanna talk about development. We need to make that mess in ourselves and we've got the, we've got the billboards to do it, so.
It'd be about three thousand dollars, bottom line, you know, if, if, uh, you know, Craig had mentioned he might do two and three, then it'd be just fifteen hundred dollars, okay? Uh, Chris, uh, I, I like to keep things local. Uh, I've worked with Crystal Walden before. Uh, and, uh, let's say a forty-eight by twelve would be roughly around fifteen hundred dollars. So, um, you know, what that message would be, you know, I mean, obviously, I'd like H A D C to, to kick that can. Um, you know, it's up to us too, um, but, uh, and.
So why don't you take lead and bring a proposal?
What's that?
Why don't you take lead and bring a proposal?
Uh, as far as graphics and design and so on and so forth, I can do that.
Work with Jesse, work with the H A D C and.
Okay, okay.
Bring it forward.
It's not gonna happen till spring anyway, so, uh, so I will, uh, I will do that because, I'd hate to see it go. Um, and it's, it's kinda the unique opportunity, so, all right, I'll do that.
Right away, change your number. Don't stay at forty-eight by twelve, cause you'd be too short. From the last time.
The other, the last time I gave you the wrong numbers. I gave you the wrong flat out numbers. That was my fault. Like you said, it was thirty feet wide by twelve, and I, that was totally my fault.
You gotta have, you gotta have six or ten.
Extended wrap.
Wrap on everything.
Yeah, and then, then I would say, we've worked with, with Crystal on that and she knows that, and, and, uh, and so, uh, we'll have extended wrap, you know, just make sure that it's done right. I actually made my mistake, so, so.
How many, how many do you think so bold?
Do you think your proposal's gonna be for multiple billboards or?
Well, you know, um, yeah.
I do, well, I'm wondering, I wonder, you know, if you're able to isolate one, two, and three. One-on-one's still, still being used until September, but two and three, something like that, we can get them in a row and tell a story that for people going by and still have something available to rent so that we don't just have crappy open billboards. I know that's your point, but where you're getting at here, but if you can tell a story from one, two, or three.
Best example I can give you is University of Missouri. Um, I've seen billboards, if you head south on, on eighty-nine, uh, you get far enough south and it, it spells out Mizzou in a series of about six signs and all they got is one letter on it, and by God, they get your attention, yeah, I mean, so. So it would have that logo, uh, and, and, uh, it would be, uh, one of the, one of, one of the billboards, the biggest billboard mistake I've made was that star, star, H I, H S D, which, Mark, you can get me on that one.
No, 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 good.
Yeah, it was, it was a mistake, I admit it. I gotta shame hide in that, but, um, bottom line is that it'll be big and bold and easy to understand, uh, and, um, so I will bring that with graphics.
I'll even be so bold as to say the money's in the budget. H A D C has the money for their sign revitalization, and if they can spend a hat, a quarter of that, I would be impressed, so in my, in my mind, the, the money's already there. Uh, assuming that the local businesses don't use it, we, we might as well ask them to.
Have we ever talked to Great Life? Have they all?
No.
I personally haven't.
You know, and one other thing that I've mentioned before, and I'll, you know, say it real quick, like since we're on the topic and I think we can let it go away, is, is, uh, that, uh, using this as an incentive for a company that may move to Hartford. Uh, you know, they might have put a criteria there, uh, but they're gonna need to hire people. They're gonna need to build the building, and it's gonna take a year. So during that year's time, you know, we could take on a little bit of HR, uh, and, um, and put that sign, put a sign up, um, would we pay for it? I don't know, maybe they pay for the, the material, the vinyl, and we pay for the install. Um, you know, let's get it. A little bit open-ended, that's why I wanna talk with you guys, um, and go from there. Are you meeting this Friday? Okay, I will see you then.
Thank you, Scott. Any more discussion? Scott, we'll go, it's eight oh three. We'll go to our eight o'clock hearing, which is the transfer malt beverage license, R B dash group, thirty-six sixty, Charter Restaurant Lounge LLC, Ground Bar Productions LLC, brewing business as group forty-two sports pro.
I make a motion to approve transfer. Second.
I just want you to know, um, I do have all their paperwork and I've reminded them twice, but I do not have the money for it, so I won't be doing anything until I get that. But the transfer is of a malt beverage license that doesn't renew until June, so.
There's some time.
There is some time for them, but I'm gonna make sure I get that, obviously, and then hopefully in the next couple weeks I can get that from them.
Anything to add? Any other discussion? Okay, bring them on.
Nelson?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Vernon?
Yep.
And Mark?
Yeah.
All right, I'll jump back down. To review yard waste disposal site, two thousand eighteen days in operation. Main reason for reviewing this is if we wanna make any changes, it helps out the sanitation companies on what they can put out there for our customers and, you know, those kinds of things, so.
Also, a little bit.
What our current is, but. Yep.
So it also helps with, you know, we'll probably need to start advertising as far as monitors, so we'll need to know what days, you know, we'll need to be there and what months and hours and that kinda stuff, so.
Biggest complaint I heard this year is that we shut down too early because of the weather. And I know you can't fix that, but if there would be some way even when we're talking to or hiring somebody, that they have a little bit of open-endedness on the, I mean, it'd only be, I mean, Tom should maybe be talking two weeks, maybe three weeks, maybe three.
Do you think it would be, and, and I heard that same thing.
Yeah.
It's, uh, it just depends on what kinda fall we have.
Yeah.
And when the winter comes, is there, can we put it on there, open April through November or until weather dictates, or open April through?
The first, was it the first Saturday in April, wasn't it? I'm just taking it.
It, according to the, according to way, the way it's set up, it would be the first Wednesday or, or Saturday in April.
In April.
So whichever of those two days is the first day in April.
Whatever day you decide.
You know, if we leave it like it is and we run into another mild fall, can't we as a council make the decision at that time to just extend it?
You can.
Or would it be better to have it, it extended and then shorten it?
I think it'd be better that way, just because we can upfront tell who's ever working it, you know.
Sure.
Here's where it is, you know, if the weather changes, of course, we'll close early, but, you know, if somebody's pl- planning for it to close in October and we extend to November, you know, they may have made plans that it may be hard to get somebody to lock.
Interrupt their ability to get to Arizona or something.
The backside would be easier, yeah.
Even if we said like the second Saturday in November, something like that.
Yeah.
And if we're talking about the year before that, we had a snowstorm the first week in November.
I get it.
Yeah, so that's why, yeah, yeah, it really depends on the year. It does depend on the year.
Yep.
I'm mad as a blue blazes myself, cause I had this all written up from the last meeting that we tabled it, and then I couldn't find it. I had most written and all that kinda stuff, but here's what I'm gonna suggest. Uh, Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, okay? Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, and here's the reason why, I remember we talked about this, I'll say it again. Um, a lot of people leave town on Saturdays, do their, their yard work, um, uh, throughout the week, uh, and, and, um, and it, that Wednesday might not work out for them, whatever, it's happened to me on a couple of occasions. Uh, also, um, I would like to, uh, implement a twenty-five dollar utilization fee or certificate. Um, I think this will, you know, keep, you know, the, the vested people, uh, that wanna utilize this, give them a reason to use it. I think also it'll make it easier for the maintenance people, for the, what do we call them, the gatekeepers? What's the official terminology?
Monitors.
Monitors, thank you. For the monitors to get them in and out. Um, if they all got, they have their little credit card or whatever we have, the, you know, you can stick in your wallet, we get, haven't got that far yet. Uh, then, then, you know, we're not gonna have to worry about lines and so on and so forth, and, and, or policing it as we go, yes.
Didn't we put a fee on it?
We did, we talked about it.
We tried.
I'll talk about it.
Okay, I didn't do it there.
Um, I did talk to a lot of people, um, during the debacle of, uh, the early closure, uh, and, and asked them, so what's it worth to you? And, and it was, it was, people started getting squeamish at fifty, they had no problem whatsoever at twenty-five. Now, is that gonna cover our costs? Absolutely not, you know, it is not, and I had the figures all broken down on adding that extra day and that, the extra monitor, and then having that monitor time. And I remember it was just, just under a thousand dollars extra for that extra day, uh, for four hours for the year. So, um, I, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna shoot it out there for lack of just discussion, I'm gonna make a motion that we, um, open the disposal site in two thousand eighteen, ready?
Disposal site, oh, okay, disposal site.
For the, the disposal site for Tuesday, Tuesdays from four to eight P M. Thursdays from four to eight P M. And Saturdays from nine A M to four P M.
Saturdays from nine to four, you said?
Nine to four, okay, can I add a little bit more in here, just get, get it all taken care of? Um, I'm just gonna shoot these days out, they can be changed. The first Saturday in April. The first Saturday in April. And the last, the first Saturday in November pending weather.
Your first Saturday's gonna be about the same thing as your last day of October, you're not gaining nothing.
Yeah, you're not really gaining much.
Should we go second?
I'd go even third or fourth, because if you can close it.
I know, it was, you're going this year, I mean.
Cause your first Saturday ain't gonna change much from the last day in October.
So don't handle it, or, just real quick, guys, what do you think? I mean, I mean, you mentioned the second or third?
Second Saturday.
Second, second Saturday, Mark?
I think, yeah, I'm going last, either the last Wednesday or Saturday, or last Tuesday, Thursday or Saturday in November.
In November, okay.
At eleven.
That gets you Thanksgiving, people got three day or four day weekend, clean yards if it's still nice.
And that's, makes sense. And like I said, we're not talking a lot here, guys, I remember.
You could even do maybe the Saturday after Thanksgiving would be the last day.
Okay, you know what, I like that. The Saturday after Thanksgiving, okay, to, to close the Saturday after Thanksgiving pending weather. That's important.
Yep, I know.
Okay, okay.
Anything else?
Yes, yes, and then, and, and then the final, uh, little tidbit is to implement. A twenty-five dollar utilization, you wanna use the word certificate, Teresa? Uh, fee.
But this is a motion.
This is a motion, it's a long one. That's why, I wanna make sure that Audrey is ready for it.
He, he was going slow enough, so that's good, but, uh, so after Thanksgiving in November, pending weather, plus, no. Plus a twenty, plus implement?
Twenty-five dollar.
A twenty-five dollar.
Fee.
Fee. Uh, is that a twenty-five dollar p- fee?
You know what, per household? It's per household, okay, permit, so use the word permit, I like, I like the word permit.
Per household, yeah, that's better. Got it.
So, there we go, read that back. That's why, that's why, yeah.
Okay, Nelson moves to open the disposal site in two thousand eighteen for Tuesday, um, from four to eight P M, Thursday from four to eight P M. And Saturday from nine to four P M. Starting the first Saturday in April and to close the s- the Saturday after Thanksgiving in November pending weather. Plus implement a twenty-five dollar permit per household. I need a second.
Come on, fellas.
I didn't type up that whole thing, come on.
I'll second so we can discuss it. All right, we're gonna start getting that section. What do you like, what don't you like?
I'm just gonna state my opinion.
I knew you would.
And I was talking to Teresa about this earlier, about. Two weeks ago, it might not even been two weeks ago. I got jumped by two people about this very thing in December. I got jumped about this in December.
About it not being open?
This. I, my thought process on this is rapidly evolving. Because this is, in my humble opinion, top three hot button topics that this town has had in the last ten years. And this thing has grown into. It might as well be social security. Don't mess with it, don't touch it, leave it alone, I love it, I'm not gonna drive four miles to Sioux Falls landfill. I'm not gonna pay a dollar. I pay my taxes. This thing has grown into a monster. And I'm with you on the days, Tuesday, Thursday, I'm with you on the hours. And, and I'd be, last week in November, I'm with you, charge you twenty-five bucks and you have it.
Okay.
Cause as you were saying that, Scott, I'm thinking you're gonna get one person who buys the permit and passes it around. You're, you're just opening the door to different products, in my mind.
We could code that number and he could cross-reference and.
Doesn't matter, Scott, here's what's gonna happen. This already, this was discussed and we were talking about this and it came off in the minutes that we were gonna put on the fee. I heard people in my neighborhood, right across the street from me, saying, we'll go together and buy one and throw everything in one truck, you know, and buy it.
Really?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, they're gonna get around it.
Well, that's, that's not a lie.
You know what, and, and honestly, there was a time when I, when I was, you know what, close it, I don't care what you do with them. Take them to Sioux Falls, burn, do whatever you're gonna do with them, but. I, I have literally not talked to one single person that said, you know what, you guys got that leaf drop off figured out. You're doing a great job. Everybody, everybody that approaches me wants it open twenty-four seven, three hundred sixty-five days. They wanna bring their leaves down there with snow in, and dump them, and they don't want it to cost them a thing. That, that's what this thing has grown into. And you know what? As far as I'm concerned, I'm here to do the people's business and the only people who are talking to me want it. And they want it all the time and they pay their taxes and they don't wanna pay any extra for it. So if that's what they want, have that, if it, if it moves into fifteen, twenty, twenty-five thousand bucks a year, so be it.
You know, the other thing, I mean, uh, it, it makes us a little bit unique, I mean, is it a selling point for, for development? Absolutely not, but, I mean, we're, we're unique when it comes to surrounding communities that do not offer it. Um.
Is it billboard worthy?
If they, we could put a billboard on that.
I had a little old lady.
Pretty leaf dump.
I had a little old lady with Carla Lee's Stop on Vandemark. Threw her car in park when she seen me, she parked in the middle of the street.
Yeah.
Because somebody that will remain anonymous told her where I lived. And I thought she was gonna, I thought she was gonna whip me in my front yard.
Because it was closed?
Because it was closed.
I'll be there.
And she had her car full of bags of leaves. And same deal, closed too early, she wants it open every day, don't wanna pay nothing for it, and you know what? I, I'm listening. That's what I hear, I'm listening and that's what I hear.
Yeah, and that's what I've heard too.
So I'm, I'm with you up till the twenty-five bucks, I'm not gonna go down that road with you.
All right. Guys, we're.
Other discussion, motion second?
I mean, um, cause I can, if you, you guys are on board with Mark, I'll gladly make a, uh, amend my motion.
I have a question.
Okay.
Don't have kids and youth sports in the summer anymore? It's Tuesdays, I mean, to me, Tuesdays, Thursdays are always busy, Saturdays are always busy. Looking at Mark, looking at Jeremy, looking at Mark, Terry. Is Wednesday, is, are those right days? Or is Tuesday, Thursday really?
You'll never, you'll never hit everybody's gonna go.
No, no, no.
Cause Wednesday's church.
No, I'm not, I'm not asking, I'm not trying to make everybody happy, I'm just saying are, is Wednesday less busy than Tuesday and Thursday? Cause I remember Tuesdays and Thursdays and Saturdays being.
Well, they. Maybe you're throwing in, no, I think just throwing in one more day, when I was watching it this fall.
Okay.
When I had to go down and open gates and stuff, we had five or six people there on Wednesdays, five or six people there on Saturdays, we was like, yeah. So throwing in one more day, this helps out that minimal.
Okay, fair enough.
So every other day, every other day, sh- somebody should be able to catch one of them days if they needed.
And I gotta comment to Mark's. I will tell you where I heard it, those first two Sunday, Sundays in November when it was nice, when I walked into the fellowship hall at church. I was getting piledrived by people and here's the, and they didn't like it, but here's what I said to them. I said, you know what our alternative would be? They said, well, what's that? I said, we're gonna close it. That set them off for a second, but then they at least thought about it. I said, hey, we're trying our hardest to keep this thing open. You know, keep complaining and it'll be, I, I told them, I said, you find four councilmen that don't like this, they'll kill it. I said, do you want that to happen?
But, but in my mind, this has evolved from a quality of life, hey, we're doing you, we're doing you a favor. Into, this, this is on, in my mind, this has become the same level of people expecting their snow move. Expecting, I, I mean, it has risen to that level.
It's an entitlement, we've created an entitlement and they.
Well, but it's, it's risen, it's risen to the level of not a nice to have, it's risen to the level of. You know, you turn your faucet on, you expect clean city water to come out of it. You, when it snows, you expect carrying the guys to move the snow? It's, I, in my mind, it has risen. It really has, it must have.
It, yeah, and.
Did the people in the fellowship hall tell you, you were doing an outstanding job?
Oh, not one of them, but that's all right. That's all right, I just wanted to drive it and say it's his fault.
But I'll tell you what, when it first started and it was a wild, wild west free-for-all, everybody was happy. There wasn't one, it wasn't nothing but hats on the back. There was nobody complaining. It's when it ballooned into the monster it became and we're trying to get it under control, that's when the complaints came.
Yeah.
All right, um, I'm gonna amend my motion then.
Could, can we just vote on it and then you just do a new motion if you don't, if they don't like?
As long as I can make the motion and someone doesn't substitute motion on it.
I guess you gotta talk about that.
Cause I hate them, get tired of them.
All right, if you wanna amend it, then amend it.
Can't you just amend, remove the fee, just remove the fee?
That's what I was gonna do.
Okay, all right, fine, amended to move the, remove the fee.
Uh, you can make, amend the motion to remove the twenty-five dollar fee.
Second. Motion second, all right. More discussion.
What was second, uh, Keel, thank you.
Yeah. All right. I'm gonna keep this one.
You were hurt it.
We'll let him move first, drunk him a while.
Well, and I can say I had much better last time, yes.
Nelson, yes. Jones?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brenner?
Yep.
And I.
Can I make a motion and there are discussions again?
Yeah. Second.
I'm not putting that on the official record.
Can I make a motion to get a better chair?
Swap that thing out.
You can swap it for that one right over there, it's empty here.
Turn the camera off so nobody sees this.
I can't do that.
Thanks, Mary.
I'm tired of looking over thinking I've got a toddler next to me.
Oh, what's that? Nice. Hey, I can see, hey, there's people there, I can see them over my screen.
If you're late this morning, I could do a.
All right, we'll move on. Review approving initial letter from Quan Burden and Post, Performance Cities two thousand seventeen annual report.
Make a motion to have Quan Burden and Post, E C, to perform the city two thousand seventeen annual report.
Second. All right, discussion.
Is this three thousand dollars, is that correct? Is that the fee?
It's up a hundred dollars from last year, it was twenty-nine.
Vote, Maya?
Yeah.
Brenner?
Yep.
Keel?
Yes.
Nelson? Yes.
All right, next time, month, doesn't require any motions or anything like that. If Minnion County rolling like system funding, basically just wanted to give you an update on. Meeting that they had down at Minnion County Emergency Management, this would have been last month. And, um, I wasn't able to go to the meeting they had with, with some of the other city folks there, but I met with Lynda Young, the director, the next day. She kind of got the gist of what was going on. And the main thing that they want to start having discussions about and they wanted to make sure that cities start to think about this and start planning for. And I don't know that there's anything we can do on it now, it's more or less just put it on your radar type thing and as more meetings happen, I'll let you know. Basically, this pie graph that, that everybody's got in front of them shows how the rural ambulances are funded in Minnion County. And so, you know, they broke it down, they did a pitch study and, uh, broke everything down over the last however many years. And, and this is where the funding is coming from. Um, as you can see with the Humboldt ambulance service, forty-four percent of it comes from billing, seventeen from other. Townships put in nine percent, cities put in eight and counties put in twenty-two percent. The quick and dirty of what they're looking at is, some of what they're seeing coming down the road is with changes in Medicare and Medicaid. Those billing, that billing portion is probably gonna shrink dramatically as the years go on. And so, a big portion of how they're funded is gonna have to be made up by other places. And they didn't necessarily come out, Lyndon come out and say, hey, county's probably done their part and they're looking at townships and, and cities to do more. But that's, that's basically the gist of it, is, is that they're probably, they're looking at it that way, saying, hey. The county can do so much, they're probably gonna do an equal amount in certain of these areas. But cities and townships are going to be asked to do more. Um, most likely from these ambulance services, so. I know it doesn't give you any hard numbers on there, it doesn't give you a ton of d- direction, but.
Did you talk about forming districts at all? Name those districts?
They talked about, we did talk about that that has been a discussion in the past, I think there was one that went out there at one point and possibly failed. Um, but, but, um, yeah.
Cause that'd take the burden off the city. You know.
And set it up.
Their district would be in charge and then we don't have to worry.
Yep.
Yep. Let's go to a little.
One of the things I made sure to bring up to them is I said, you know, what, what we'll wanna look at is if we are asked to do more, we're gonna wanna know. What the calls are for our local ambulance service and how many of them were within city governments. And because I, speaking for everybody near, I'm sure, is that we're not gonna wanna pay much more than our part or much more than our percentage. I feel like some of that's probably gonna fall more on county and townships and some of those, so. Anyway, wanted to bring that back and at least let you know about that, that that's some things that are probably coming down the road, it's not anything that's on fire right now. But all these places have different funding times and different funding times, so we wanted to get that cycle started so that people are kind of aware of that. And I guess I didn't do the research and I should have asked him some more questions about what's changing with Medicare and Medicaid. And why that billing portion is going to shrink as much. And he did talk a little bit about, they're just going to pay what they decide they're wanting to pay. Mark, it's all.
They mean, you know, it's county?
Meaning that Medicare or Medicaid, they're gonna say, you know what, okay, that was, that was a fifteen hundred dollar trip. And they'll say, yep, we'll send you two hundred fifty dollars and that's just what they're gonna do, so. Um, I think that's gonna be the thing that guys wanna change, so.
I'm not sure if it's.
Where?
You're.
Go ahead.
Uh, is, uh, so, did they touch on how the county allocated the funds? I mean, what was the, that was a twenty-two percent, twenty percent and twenty-six percent? I just out of curiosity, I mean, is that something that, that they touched on that's pretty steadfast?
I think the county gives a flat fee.
The, the flat fee, so then it's, okay.
It's relative, on their own budget, the percentage.
Okay, so the flat fee, so that's why it's fifty percentages.
Yeah, I got this, you can review this after if you wanted to, to, or pass it down here, but. General fund allocation, you know, I think this is the county section of it, so they said fifty thousand, Garrettson, Del Rapids, Humboldt. Okay, I'm laid it out there, so it's a different percentage for each, but.
Okay, that's, that's fine, maybe that's good.
Sure.
Yeah, if they give everybody fifty grand.
Yeah, it was, it was probably.
Somebody might have a hundred thousand dollar budget, somebody might have a hundred twenty-five thousand dollar budget, so then the percentage is gonna be.
Right, yeah.
Basically, their own budget, they don't obviously anymore.
Right. Yeah.
Okay.
I'll let you know if I hear more or if they have more meetings coming up. If they've got more, I'd ask for one of you to come with, um, or if I can't make it, I'll ask somebody else to go too. See what I go. Move on from that. Correspondence, any, um, any new correspondence, any thank you ideas, anything that we, uh, we should address as far as that goes?
We already thanked the Girl Scouts, haven't we?
Yes, we have.
Yeah.
I think we did, yeah, Tom?
We did that night.
Okay. Nothing comes to mind, we'll. We'll move on. We do need to go into executive session for personnel and legal.
You ready, Mark? Executive session?
Second. First.
First, second, okay.
First, second.
Yep.
I have any favor?
I have.
I make a motion to. I make a motion to approve the following pay raises. Jesse O'Kane, Jesse Fonker, Rhonda Cooper, truck, three percent increases. Every other full-time staff member, two percent. Full-time or staff member? Full-time. Does that include Terry?
Terry's part-time. Terry's year round part-time.
Full-time and part-time. Full-time and part-time staff members.
Two percent, okay. Part-time, year round.
Year round.
I mean, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So Paul Clark could get two.
Let's get two.
Second.
Jeez.
Discussion?
The authorities.
You wanna go home?
It's all down. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed?